And friends of the young gentleman who passed over the weekend, it'd be great. So if you all join me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And let's remain standing and let's cite the Pledge of Allegiance if you would please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and again, welcome to this evening's meeting. The first item on our agenda will be the lease 2004 hearing. And I'm turning this over to Mr. Basham?
Yep, thank you. Very similar to what we did a couple of meetings ago for the GeoBond 2023. First item on the agenda really is to recognize that we did have proofs of publication. So I do recommend that the proofs of publication of the lease 2024 hearing be approved as presented.
All right, do I have a motion for approval of the proof of publication for the 2024 lease hearing?
Move.
Second.
Motion Mr. Vote, second by Ms. Slaughter. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried.
Now, a little bit to explain about what this is, is as we've talked about, we recently did the GeoBond for 2023, and that was going to cash flow the beginning of our three big construction projects. This is that next step for us to prepare in 2024. So what we will do is have this lease agreement with our building corporation, and we will take mainly, we're purchasing certainly the land that we already have for the new middle school, but then also the building corporation will take ownership of part of our land as essentially collateral on the property here at Perry Hill and Oak View for the rest of the project. So that will go into play for construction and renovation at Carroll High School, and then also for the construction here. So we'll have that meeting actually tomorrow to do their side of the lease agreement. So again, very similar to what we did already, just kind of that next step in that process for the lease 2024.
Very good. All right. And with that, I'll open up for any board comments. All right, none? Any audience comments specifically addressing the 2024 lease? All right, I'll entertain, oh, and we don't have to even do motion for this. We will close the meeting and move on to our regular meeting. The first item on our agenda will be the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion for adoption?
Move for approval.
Second. Motion for Ms. Slaughter, second by Mr. Vote. Any questions? I hope not. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Now we'll get to the fun part. Turn it over to Superintendent Barker.
Thank you, President Summers. We are very excited tonight to recognize our Maple Creek Middle School Girls Cross Country Team for winning this year's middle school cross-country state meet that was held in Terre Haute in late September. Our Maple Creek team won the state championship, and we are so proud of you. Going to ask you to come forward. We're going to, we have certificates for our student athletes that President Summers will present. And then also, at the end of that time, I'm going to also bring forward our coaches. Going to introduce you two, if you would, and ask you to come forward in that order. So our coaches that are with us tonight are Coach Quinn Ruick, Brett Duffner, and I hope Callie Geiger. And then our student athletes, Leighton Archer, Olivia Conlin, Emerson Crass, Cora Evans, Mallory Frazier. And if you would, girls, stay up here in the front. We're going to take a photo when we're done. Avery Gagnon, Macy Kosher, Ariya Sud, Kate Sunderland, and Melana Williams. Want to say a huge congratulations to our coaches and these, these fine student athletes. From what I understand, not only are they great cross-country runners, but they're fine representatives of their family, their school, great students. And I understand, in addition to all the winning, they enjoy being with each other and have had a lot of fun over the course of the season that maybe even exceeds the state championship. So, girls, we're very excited, very happy, very proud of you, and wish you the best going forward. We're going to ask for the board to maybe stand behind them. We're going to take a photo with them.
Can I ask you to do that? Parents, if anyone wants to come forward, if they can talk about, please do so.
and Mr. Carter Jones. We weren't allowed to go down to the state meet until these guys were in charge. So I really appreciate what you guys did in letting us go down there in 2015, because when we were runners-up, and then 2016, we won it with the ladies. And we've been on the podium a couple of times since then. Last year, we were on third and fourth. And this year, the gentlemen were third, and the ladies, of course, won it, and went undefeated, and also were conference champions. So this has been a great program over the years, and I've been out here since '05, and there have been a number of amazing runners, including Mrs. Hathaway's young lady, who's a state champion. Lots of state champions, lots of Big Ten runners and Division One runners in the past here, and you ladies are now part of that legacy. So looking for more great things from them. And we appreciate the parents. You've created some wonderful children here. Keep them coming, keep them fast, and we'll make them faster.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Okay, we'll move on with our board meeting now. And the next item on our agenda is audience comments, public participation.
President Summers, we currently have no one signed up.
All right. With that, we'll go into the consent agenda items. So I'll read through the agenda items. 6.01, approval of the minutes of the October 9th regular meeting. 6.02, approval of grants and donations. 6.03, approval of claims and payroll subject to audit. 6.04, approval of the facility use request. 6.05, approval of field trip requests. 6.06, homebound. 6.07, approval of the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion Ms. Hathaway, second by Ms. Slaughter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. And now we'll move into personnel report with Mr. DiPremio.
I will be referencing the personnel section of your packet. As a background statement to begin with, I do want to reassure the board that all recommendations have gone through the proper criminal history background checks and proper scrutiny applied that the community and the board expect. Recommendation highlights include three certified recommendations, 10 classified. It is recommended that the items in the personnel report be approved as presented.
Okay. Do we have a motion for approval of the items in the personnel, 7.01 through 7.06?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Ms. Hathaway, second by Mr. Vote. Any questions or comments? Any items in the material?
I do have one, just more of a broader question on the exit interviews. Have you been able to, how successful have those been, and have you been able to gain any trends from any kind of exit interviews that you've been doing?
Yes, we've been able to get some trends. Success, they keep trickling up. Whenever I get word that a resignation is coming or pending, I try to contact those individuals and thank them for their service and remind them to fill out the exit interview. Some do, some don't. Current trends, as we would probably expect, some of them, particularly with the classified personnel, tend to be more concerned with pay. They might be leaving because they're taking a job opportunity that either offers them a few more hours or better pay. Other trends tend to include family, spouse got relocated, they've had to move out of state. There have been, gosh, predominantly much appreciation expressed for the opportunity to work and serve for NACs, but life circumstances have created some other, either opportunities or direction for them to follow. Those seem to be the current trends.
Great, thank you.
No other questions, we'll go to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Okay, we'll move to curriculum instruction and technology with Dr. Toller.
Yeah, thank you, President Summers. My only agenda item this evening is related to professional development request. Just a few points of clarification. The ISNA State Conference is related to the Indiana School Nutrition Association, so those are some of our food service workers requesting to attend that state conference. And then also, you'll notice, there's a training for Christine Parker called UCSF Online ADAS II Training, and that is specifically related to some training that Christine will receive related to administering testing for students who are potentially in the autism spectrum disorder. So that is a special ed specific training. Having stated this, it is recommended that the professional learning and training activities be approved as presented.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion by Ms. Slaughter, second by Ms. Hathaway. Any questions or comments? Hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Okay, moving right along, we'll go to the superintendent's report. Mr. Barker.
Thank you. First item up tonight is in regards to the master teacher contract. We are at the final step of this year's collective bargaining process. As you know, we held a public hearing on September 14th and posted the tentative agreement to our NACs website on October 13th. And then at our last school board meeting on Wednesday, October 18th, we held this special meeting, and the board reviewed the tentatively agreed upon terms for this 23-24 master teacher contract. The Teachers Association, the Northwest Allen County Educators Association ratified the contract on Thursday, October 19th. So this is the final step in all of those legal requirements that we have to fulfill. I can tell you, it's been a very positive and collaborative process throughout, and we're grateful for that. We met seven times overall, beginning in March with informal discussions to our final formal meeting that we held on October 10th. As you know, the formal timeline is September 15th to November 15th. Tonight, the board will consider recommendation to approve the terms, and overview of that is that the minimum base salary will increase from $44,500 to $46,500. The maximum base salary for teachers with a bachelor's degree increases from $71,200 to $74,400. And the maximum base salary for teachers with a master's degree increases from $75,650 to $81,375. In this contract, we continued with a performance-based salary compensation program. In this program, we settle on a specific dollar that we put toward teacher salaries. Through this model, a NACs teacher will earn approximate salary increases between 5.6% and 9.5%. A teacher completing his or her first year with a bachelor's last year who earned professional performance and continuous professional learning will see a salary increase of 8.5%. The average teacher completing his or her fifth year with a bachelor's who earned professional performance, continuous professional learning, and retention will see a salary increase of approximately 9.5%. The average teacher completing his or her 26th year with a master's who earned professional performance and continuous professional learning will see a salary increase of approximately 5.7%. For health insurance, NACs continues to contribute 90% for the high deductible plan, 74% for Plan A, 67% of Plan A+ and 74% of dental vision-only plans. With the 4% increase for health insurance costs this year, NACs will contribute an increase of $238,555 towards health insurance benefits. Notable contract language differences were made in the following areas: family illness leave, the administration of the sickly bank, and the performance-based salary compensation program was changed to decrease the stipend portion of the salary increase with more being added to the base salary to benefit our teachers. Finally, increases and changes were made to the extracurricular salary schedule in the following areas. Salaries in those areas were increased because this is associated to the minimum base salary of our teachers that was raised. Changes were made to make certain positions more equitable in comparison to other similar positions, and there was a focus on fine arts and emerging sports positions that have recently been added by the Indiana High School Athletic Association. I would like to express my sincere appreciation for those representatives of the Teachers Association. I see with us tonight is Mr. Jim Walker, who leads the negotiation team for our teachers. Also on that team was Mrs. Jody Heater, Mr. Steve Driver, Mrs. Lisa Beranda, and Mr. Tyler Adelsberger, and Mr., and I think that may have been it. For their efforts to work together to reach this tentative agreement, they really have been great to work with. I know we kind of looked at things a little bit differently and probably went through a paradigm shift with me being new, but I appreciate the way that we were able to work collaboratively, really with the same goals of doing our best for the school district and, at the same time, trying to do our best for our teachers. So I want to also thank Mr. Basham, Mr. DiPremio, Dr. Bidding, Dr. Toller, Board President Kent Summers, Board Vice President Liz Hathaway. Your work to help this agreement was very beneficial. Additionally, Mr. Mallers was a big help to us behind the scenes in the office. Finally, I can tell you that our leadership team has been meeting individually with our non-certified work groups over the last couple of weeks, and we hope to bring a recommendation in the coming weeks for compensation and benefit increases similar to the recommendation that we're making tonight for our teachers. So at this time, I recommend approval of the master teacher contract with the Northwest Allen Educators Association as presented.
All right, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Mr. Vote, second by Ms. Hathaway. Any questions or comments at this time? I guess I would just like to express thanks again to Jim Walker, leading an outstanding group of team, but also always moving forward, right? The whole point was to continue to move forward and be productive. I think as Mr. Barker said, it's been a paradigm shift, and I think in the world transparency, I think we were truthful and very open in sharing everything that came with us. So I think that that's an appreciative part of it. After vote, Mr. Walker, if you'd like to come up and say a few words, that'd be great. I've got an order there, but I'll go ahead and we'll take the vote if there's no other questions. All those in favor of the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. Mr. Walker, if you'd like to share a few words, that'd be great.
Okay, I would say ditto to a lot of what Mr. Barker said. The contract negotiations went very smoothly this year. Both sides were very open in sharing information, sharing ideas. We considered each other's opinions, and it went really well. We began the process back in March. I know Brandon and I bounced a lot of emails back and forth just to make sure we were talking about the same numbers, but we do really appreciate all your time and understanding in shaping this contract. I do have like an official statement from the association. I'll just go ahead and read that if that's okay with you. On behalf of the Northwest Allen County Education Association, we would like to thank the school board and administrative team for supporting a healthy dialogue and efficient process in reaching an agreement for the 2023-2024 certified master contract. The goal of our education association is to build a school community and a contract that clearly values and respects staff, which also serves to motivate our teachers to continue to grow professionally and be retained at Northwest Allen County schools. The association and administration have freely shared information and opinions since March via email and in seven different discussion meetings. We resolved language modifications, made important adjustments to the extracurricular schedule, and reached a compensation deal that demonstrates the NACs school board clearly values and respects their teachers. So we thank you for that. The ECA adjustments were made to accommodate emerging sports and to provide better equity in staffing programs like Unified Sports and the Performance Arts. While we do not officially represent our classified staff in negotiations here at Northwest Allen County Schools, we want to express our sincere appreciation for them and the value that they have to the NACs team. We could not offer such high-quality education to our students without our classified team members and the support of our administration. Thank you for your time and understanding in completing the 23-24 contract.
Thank you very much, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. My second report tonight is the ADM enrollment report finalization. At our last regular board meeting on October 9th, I presented an update on our ADM. That actual ADM period ran through October 13th, and so tonight I want to make a couple of very quick adjustments to that from what I shared with you in the previous meeting. So if we could pull up that first attachment, and also you have those at your seats, board members, if you would like to, if that's easier for you to see. We'll look at the one that's all a white-black copy first. So if you look at that, this actually shows a total ADM for our enrollment for this first semester of 8,356. I tentatively reported at the first update that it was 8,354. So thankfully, we enrolled two more students that week, and we're excited for that. So you can see the breakdown of that enrollment by grade level from kindergarten through our senior class, and then you can also see on that spreadsheet a comparison between last school year, and you'll see that we are up 219 students. I can tell you that, and I say it often, it seems, when I talk about enrollment, that we are an outlier, and we're appreciative of being an outlier, that families are choosing Northwest Allen County schools. I read a report last week, it was a demographic update for the country, and it showed what was projected to happen in enrollment across every state. And Indiana is projected to lose 1% of its students between now and 2031. And obviously, we do not fit into that category, so we're thankful for that. Obviously, enrollment has a big impact on our revenue. The second spreadsheet that I want to update for you tonight is the heat maps that we used really throughout the construction projects when we first got the demographic study from Dr. McKibben, I think, last October. And I want to update something here. First of all, the numbers are now updated, and you'll notice that the gray lines represent what was the actual ADM, and then the everything else that is white were what was actually projected then by Dr. McKibben through 2032-33. So you can see, in some cases, we're already exceeding his first-year projections. I think he, I think he projected that we would grow by 161, and I think we grew by the 219. One thing that I also want to point out to you, in this discovery, we noticed that Perry Hill's number was actually too high in terms of its capacity. So that spreadsheet has a highlight for the Perry Hill column, and that now shows a number of 600. It was represented as 650. So you'll notice a little pink now into that column because we actually don't have a capacity of 650 here. Now, when we talk about capacities, it's important to note that it really also matters what kind of programming you have. We have more students in a fifth-grade class than we do in a kindergarten class. If there are different special ed programs in a building, that reduces the capacity. So when we're looking at this, we're talking about general, generally speaking, number of classrooms, estimating at about 25 students per classroom to get those capacities that we have. One added bonus, by reducing that Perry Hill, we don't really have a concern here yet because very quickly, a year and a half from now, we'll be moving into a new central office. As a part of that project, we will be increasing the capacity of this school by 100 students because we'll be adding four new classrooms where our current central office is. So I don't want to alarm anyone by this change. It does show a little bit of pink added in, but we will have some added capacity. But we also know, we're looking at a rebalancing plan to announce sometime prior to spring break, and we could end up shifting students as well, so, but we can see, looking at this, where our capacities lie. But I wanted to provide those updates because those are some actual changes than what we expected from earlier in October.
Thank you very much. Go to the next item on our agenda, which is the business report. Mr. Basham?
Thank you. A few things tonight. Up first, I do have the resolution authorizing the execution of lease 2024, and this is the follow-up from our hearing earlier today. And again, just as a reminder, this is basically stating that we are going to enter an lease agreement with our building corporation, and then we will pay them to pay the bondholders when we actually take the bond. So I do recommend the resolution authorizing the execution of lease 2024 be approved as presented.
Do we have a motion for approval of the resolution authorizing the execution of 2024 lease?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion Ms. Slaughter, second by Ms. Hathaway. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
Thank you. Up next, I do have a resolution of the eighth supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuance of bonds. And I emphasize the eighth there because we have the seventh at our September 20th meeting for the general obligation bond 2023. So as I stated at that time, this is really a requirement by the SEC, and essentially that we have to report any, I'm going to say, important or detrimental issues that could occur, a late payment or something of that effect. So we are required to post those to Emma, and it's basically saying that we will do such if those were to happen. So I do recommend the resolution of the eighth supplement to master continuing disclosure undertaking and issuance of bonds be approved as presented.
All right, do I have a motion for approval of the eighth supplement?
So moved.
Second.
Motion Mr. Vote, second by Ms. Hathaway. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried.
Thank you. Up next, I do have a resolution about bond anticipation notes, and I do want to elaborate on that one a little more. What we have done to structure this project was, again, issue those general obligation bonds to cash flow into next year as a way to eliminate capitalized interest as much as possible. So we certainly have our cash flow, however, there's lots of things that can happen. Weather could be great, we could start slightly sooner. Weather could be bad, and it could push us back a little bit. So we're right in this window where we're really close to being, to make it all the way, the way that we want to, but we may not. It's just dependent on the construction project. So what this does is basically allows us to go ahead and issue these notes where we would be able to get funds to continue to cash flow us without taking out the full amount of money. So again, we can cut down on that capitalized interest. So our teams work really hard to make sure that we're keeping our money here and we're not just paying for interest because of the timing of the project. So we're really trying to get to October because we'll have our AV. Indiana typically, as we know, gives us our assessed valuation sometime in September, and so if we can get to that point and know how much we've grown, because again, as Mr. Barker mentioned, we're the outlier right now, if we can get that number, it can help us, again, to structure this in the best possible way for us moving forward with capacity for other projects and other things that we would need in the future. So we may not need to issue these, but we might, and we want to be prepared to do such. So having said that, I do recommend the resolution approving the issuance of bond anticipation notes for lease 2024 be approved as presented.
All right, do we have a motion for approval of the issuance of bond anticipation notes?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion Ms. Hathaway, second by Ms. Slaughter. Questions or comments? I'm assuming with our general overall debt level, this is just a combination, whether it's bonds or notes, and it's a short-term financing. So if we were at our 178 and we took out 20, we'd have 154 to finance after that. That's, it's all part of that, and so we don't have to go back and act upon it.
Yep, that's a great question.
It's just how we issue it.
Yeah, once we issue that GeoBond 2023 for that 19.69, we have a Yeah, once we issue that GEO bond 2023 for that 19.69, we have a max basically in the lease 24 of 158. So if we were to issue anticipation notes, we would be taking that off of the top. So we would still eventually issue the 158, this would be a component of that.
Right. And then you'd pay back that note.
Correct.
It'd be all part of the bond.
Correct. And it is plausible, I think this is worthwhile to note, because we're so close, it is possible that they could, our team could look at and go on, we could go to 2025, knowing AV and issuing these notes, it could end up being our best possible scenario. I don't think that will be the case because as long as we issue in '24, we can collect and make a payment in '25, but it is possible that going out to '25 in a note could get us the best possible, depending on where rates are at. So I'll certainly keep us, everybody posted on how that plays out, but we seem to be on track pretty well. So we did close on the GEO bond '23 recently, and that worked out really well for us because we've had good success in the past with our credit and ratings, so we were able to close on that pretty well, so.
We're good, thank you. Any other questions? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
The next one, I didn't think I'd ever be excited about wide-area network installation, but we've taken this out to bid three times, and the goal from Mr. Slater and Mr. Dale, our tech team, was to be able to get this and own it ourselves, rather than leasing this out and relying on other people. The cost of that is vast, so we were finally able to get a bid through Baseline. This will read kind of odd, but essentially, we qualify for E-rate, and so we can get a rebate from that. So we have, Baseline's been great to work with, they've allowed us to wait for this project. So we're actually going to push this off to start in March because then we'll know exactly all the rebates that we get. We've already been assured, we've got our communication, that it's going to be the same process as it was this year. However, they don't actually put that out until the calendar year turns. So as a means for us, regardless, we would be fine if we had to pay that amount of money the entire total, because we'd get that reimbursed to us directly, and then we could use it for tech funds. In a way to not have to relegate us to only use those funds on tech, Baseline was like, hey, we can wait, we're comfortable with waiting, we're going to hold that price for you guys, and then we can go ahead and apply the E-rate, so they'll get that direct reimbursement. So that's great for us. Again, we're comfortable and we're fine to be able to do this without doing it, however, that's just gives us some flexibility, so we do appreciate Baseline and what they provided. We do have multiple quotes, if you look in your board packet for different strands, just to explain that, and if you have any questions, Tim Dale's here, you can probably answer better than myself. However, this is essentially connecting all of our buildings. So we've got 96 strands as a bid, but we also have 144, and we are recommending in the bid tonight to go with the 144 as our technology needs increase, as we're adding on buildings. This gives us the capacity to add multiple buildings in the future if needed. So inside, this essentially looks at a 20-year window of span that we would own and have this. This allows us to add multiple buildings. Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we can get at least three more buildings on this if we go with the 144. So that helps us with costs later on, and this does include already connecting out to new central office and also the new middle school. So that's great that this is already in here, gives us capacity for three more, which when we get to any projects that we would have, we would be able to, you know, save that cost. So we're getting this upfront with what we need now and with growth, so it ended up being a really great bid, and we're really pleased with what we got. So it took us a while, but we were able to finally get something. So I do recommend the bid of 1.6, excuse me, $1,620,175 with NAC paying $486,053 after the E-rate reductions from Baseline Communications for the wide-area network circuit installation be approved as presented.
All right. Do I have a motion for approval of the WAN circuit installation?
Second.
Motion, Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Slaughter. Questions or comments?
Glad we got it done finally.
Yeah.
All right. No other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried.
All right, thank you. Up next, we do have a Maple Creek roof project. We were just, you know, wrapping up those roofs, it seems like just the other day, and here we are with phase three for Maple Creek. So this was budgeted in our GEO bond '21 and '22. We've kind of restructured how we've done some of that, so we might have used both of those funds, but this is the third phase, and they have that budgeted for about $783,000. The good news for that is four years ago, we were prepared at $762,000. So we're really close with our budget and projections, considering how much change has happened in that time. So really comfortable with that, and Moke Park, as we know, has previously constructed our other two middle schools and helped us with those roof projects. So the first step of this, we'll have a few things over the next couple of months, but first step is I do recommend Moke Park for their architect services for the Maple Creek Roof Project Phase Three be approved as presented.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion, Ms. Hathaway, second by Ms. Slaughter. Questions or comments? All those in favor of the Maple Creek Roof Project say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
And finally tonight, I do have a recommendation. As we are getting ready to build our new central office, we want to make sure that we're clearing out items, certainly in our barn that's out there right now. So Dr. Bidding has been working with facility managers at all of our locations to make sure that we're getting our space ready and prepped for that. So I do recommend the resolution of surplus property be approved as presented.
Motion for approval of the resolution of surplus, resolution of, I guess, liquidation of our surplus property?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion, Ms. Slaughter, second by Ms. Hathaway. Any questions or comments?
Does this just go into the operations fund, the money that we get?
Correct. Okay, correct. Yep.
Okay. No other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay, construction project update. Dr. Bidding?
Thank you, President Summers. Just a, again, for the traditional project update here that we've done the last few board meetings, we are taking steps ever more closely to getting to that construction part of it, which is crazy to think it's gone by this quick. The first slide that I'm going to show you is the central office slide, and basically where we're at with the central office is... You know, Mr. Dale did say he threw the batteries in upside down, I thought he was joking, but anyway. So we're going to start with the central office, and we'll let the slides catch up here in a minute. Basically, where we're at with the central office project is the bids are out. We had 18 bid packages that went out for bid last week. We had a pre-bid meeting here at Perry Hill, we held that. As YGANT, the folks from YGANT kind of explained, most of the folks that were here for that pre-bid meeting were really looking at the renovation space of Perry Hill. But we were, you know, pleased to host that, get the interest going, and so those 18 bid packages, we'll be opening those bids here in two weeks. And so just excited to see where that kind of kicks off the whole bid project. As we've stated, we kind of then are on a monthly basis, so we'll open bids for the central office mid-November, for the high school mid-December, and for the middle school mid-January. So we are there at that point for central office, and again, 18 different bid packages, anywhere from concrete to electrical and so on and so forth. So just, I guess we're excited to see what happens here in the next couple of weeks. So the... So the high school project. It is one of those things where I continue to say every time we meet, it is impressive, the scope of this project. I had the opportunity to meet with representatives from YGANT today and Barton Co., and we met for about five hours and talked about site logistics. And this is where I would like to just, again, thank the board for having a CMC process in place. YGANT has done an incredible job of thinking through, again, all of those different spaces that you see highlighted, and when they're going to be, at what spot during this summer, during next summer, during Semester One, and we just spent going through each kind of, okay, what does Summer of '24 look like? When are we closing this door? How are we closing these doors? And so really just a great productive meeting on site logistics, and part of that is how we're going to have to relocate some of our programs, and part of that is, for example, we're going to be meeting with Hunter Town Fire Department to say, here's our egress plan in case of evacuation, are you guys okay with it? Get your eyes on it. And so, but I can't compliment YGANT enough and the thought they've put behind today's meeting, and we had to make some adjustments, but they were well-prepared for that. So again, just as we look at the different spaces and what it all entails, it's hard to believe we have a final page-turn meeting this Friday. And so we're going to sit down and go through the documents this Friday, and so our design process is really kind of even wrapping up for this project. Just want to point out a couple of the projects here. The first one I have circled up there is the current radio, TV, and the current weight room that I have circled, and we'll look at it on this highlight. We're basically taking those spaces, and right now, we have three ag teachers. We are very fortunate here at Carroll High School to have a great agriculture program, which we need three teachers. One of those teachers is kind of in a room that's really not designed for agriculture, and so we're going to move in the lower picture where it says ag horticulture, that is the current radio, TV space. Well, the current radio and TV space is going to get moved into part of the old weight room space. We're going to expand the production studio of radio, TV. We're going to expand the production room as far as where the controls are. So this allows more students to be in that area, working on the design, the production of the TV studio and video programming. By moving them into that room, it allows us to take the current space of the radio, TV, and build a horticulture class and lab space that can be attached with the other ag classes. And so now we have a nice structure in place that we have our all ag teachers together and lab spaces together. The current production studio is going to make a great horticulture area because it's got power there. With minimal, with minimal work, we can add grow lights and climate control structures, so we can do some things there. Our computer science class right now is currently up on the second floor by the library. Mr. Campbell is an incredible teacher, and of course, that program has just exploded with what he's trying to do. It won't be very far out before we're going to need a second space, a second teacher. And again, the things that Mr. Campbell's got going with advanced placement, excuse me, advanced placement computer science, cybersecurity classes, we need the space to bring in our own rack that is a secured network that kids can basically try to break, right? And so we've got two really nice spaces there that'll be going in side by side, which gives us that flexible project-style classroom that puts kids at groups and puts kids in individual, puts kids at a computer, and just really gives that flexibility space. And all of that, both radio, TV, and computer science, there's just a lot of stuff, and so we've been able to take some space and design some storages, you can see on the right-hand side up there. So again, we're really excited about what we're going to do with growing programs and restructuring some position of programs. But just in that little bit right there, that was, look at the logistics behind it, again, that YGANT is coordinating when we're going to be in that space, when we're going to be in that space, and so on, so very fortunate there. So just again, that's what the current, right now, it's current radio, TV, which will be the horticulture class, and you can see, it's amazing, when you're in that high school, you know you go down ramps, but that's to get back, that doorway and stairs is to get up into the old ag shop. So we're going to connect the room there, and it'll have a connection to the ag. That's just the radio, TV, production area that we're gutting and turning into a horticulture area. So again, just to kind of show you what that looks like. And a new radio, TV room will have windows that go clear through the production case, so you can be in the classroom, see into the control room, see into the studio. So a lot of, a lot of great input that we've gotten from the different teachers, and we've really tried to hear what they're saying and put it in practice. So very excited about that space. The second space that I'd like to just look at is the current library on the freshman side that we're going to convert into, as you can see, I kind of blew it up there for you. We're going to gain two more science classrooms and a multipurpose room space. And so again, as the freshman classes continue to grow, we need to add another room on that side of the building that we can accommodate biology one and other freshman-level science classes. And so it gives us two very nice science rooms with some storage space, but we also then maintain, I say NPR-like space, because if you've been on the 10 to 12 side of the building, the NPR room is really a space you can divide into half. The space will be very similar, it's basically the size of two classrooms. We're going to be able to put study hall in there, but it's also going to be a nice meeting room space. So I think it's a quality use of that room, and again, just a couple images of what the new science classrooms on that side will look like. Now, the middle school, we're again hammering through stakeholder meetings. Very excited to talk about the fact that this coming Thursday, we're going to be meeting with Ms. Denise Moore's third-year interior design class. We're actually going to have an architect design meeting with that group. And so had the opportunity to go in and meet with her class today and let them know that, you know, what they're going to be a part of is an actual design meeting. It's scheduled, we're going through just basically the interiors of the middle school space by space, but we thought, and Moke Park's been gracious enough to jump in on this, and we're going to include them in this process, and we're going to get them involved in even talking through what things are, why they are the way they are, what they look like. As I've joked with many of them, I worry about matching myself in the morning, I'm supposed to make an interior design decision, so I'm going to put the pressure on them to help with this as well. Looking forward to that, and again, appreciate Moke Park jumping in and just being a great gamesmanship on this and allowing them to join in. So looking forward to that this Thursday. Just some 3D renderings, again, as you look at this building, it does still look like Carroll Middle, Maple Creek, but I can attest to the fact, and as I've been pointing out and continue to point out, Moke Park's done a great job of looking at those different spaces and listening to the input. We keep saying we've lived in it for 20 years, let's see what we can do. And so a couple areas that I'll point out, this is the office, the new office layout, as you really kind of start in the bottom where it would be the main entryway, really kind of flipped the entire desk area. So you're going to come into a secure vestibule where the secretaries have a clear line of sight, you're going to be buzzed into the office at that point. And a little change, the middle school treasurer is really one of the very few people that are there year-round, and so that's that first office, kind of moving on the diagonal up left there. We've positioned the desk now where in that office, there's actually a window that has a view out, because during the summer, not much traffic, they can be in there doing their work, look up and still see people to buzz in. And so really feel like we've made some improvements as far as the safety aspect goes. The rest of that office, really, we've just kind of listened to folks. We still have areas for an SRO, for assistant principals, for guidance counselors, but as you kind of move, and I know it's at an angle, but towards the upper right, we're actually going to try to bring student services, the student service concept into the middle school, so there'll be an entry into student services on the upper right-hand side of that picture to where you can see, at our current middle schools, all the traffic goes in one area. So we've got, you know, people from the outside, and this and that, everything's going on in the office. Well, sometimes we want to be able to just say, students, if you need to see a guidance counselor, you don't need to be here, you can come in this door. And so really put a lot of thought into trying to separate some of the traffic patterns and keep the folks from the outside in this office, and the kids coming to see guidance counselors or whatever into this office. So that's one of the little changes we've made. There are some meeting room spaces that are currently, again, new to this area. The other one, and if you've never lived in middle school lunch, this wouldn't excite you at all, but if you look at Dr. Toll and Mr. Basham's faces, they think this is one of the coolest nuances that we've done. We have three serving lines all running the same direction. Again, may not seem like a big deal, but if you look at the serving lines and where they're set up at Carroll Middle and Maple Creek, there's two running parallel, and there's one kind of off to the side perpendicular, and you can't really supervise at all from one particular area. And we listen to the kitchen folks, we listen to the administrators talking about supervision, and again, Moke Park's done a great job of really re-envisioning that entire space. And so we flipped the washroom to the other side, and this wasn't an easy task. They had to, structurally, they had to move some columns and do some other things, but very excited to say we really feel great about the kitchen layout. We met with some folks from Maple Creek's kitchen staff and kind of laid the plans out, and they were really excited about the input that they've given and what it's done. The walk-in coolers to the top of this have a backside door to them, so now folks can come in from the loading dock in a secure area, get in and out of the freezer and not get into the kitchen area. And so again, some nuanced changes like that, we really feel great about just the input that has been provided. And again, we can't just misplace the classroom, right? So the normal classroom, we've heard about some of the casework, and this will be one of the things that the interior design class also works with us on. They've got some different mockups and some different colors and images and carpet patterns and things like that, and one of the things we're going to do Thursday is just have the class give their input as far as what the traditional common classroom looks like. So again, we'll keep bringing some more images back to you, but really, the design process is rolling along, and it's hard to believe, like I said, that the page turn for the high school project is coming here due with their documents coming due in a week, and then close behind will be the middle school. So as I keep saying, we've got three great architect teams working with us, and YGANT's doing a great job, and I can't just voice my pleasure with all of those guys. So now we're to the point that we kind of warned you about last time, and we've, we're into that design process where we need to really kind of solidify the name, the mascot, and the colors for this new middle school, and, you know, we've used placeholders. Weeks ago, we kind of talked to you about placeholders and the fact that Willow Creek has, has come from looking at a map and seeing that there's a hatch ditch on the property we bought and it flows to Willow Creek. And Willow Creek services a lot of that Hunter Town area. And it just kind of sounded like, boy, that fits what we've done with our middle schools. And so that's where we came up with the idea of Willow Creek Hawks. When you talk to Mr. and Mrs. Malcolm and Mr. Hatch, they talk about the hawks that sit out on their barns. And, you know, there's the soaring program there in the Hunter Town area. We thought, thought it really kind of just fit the, the, the whole scheme of things. And then blue and orange, again, as we looked at those colors, we, we really kind of thought, Maple Creek, blue and green, Carroll Middle, blue and black. And we thought, we want to keep the blue in line with marching towards being a Charger. And so we, we really felt like orange might be a nice complementary color. So at this time, I will first of all start by saying it is recommended that the name of the new middle school be Willow Creek Middle School.
All right. Motion for approval of the name of the new middle school to be called Willow Creek Middle School. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Slaughter, second by Ms. Hathaway. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Willow Creek it is.
And so I guess part two of that actionable item is it is my recommendation that the mascot for Willow Creek Middle School be Hawks.
We have a motion for approval of the new middle school mascot to be referred to as the Hawks.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Slaughter. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
And finally, for the school colors, is my recommendation that the school colors for the Willow Creek Middle School Hawks be blue and orange.
All right. Motion approval for the Willow Creek Middle School Hawks colors to be blue and orange.
So move.
Oh, second?
Second.
Motion, Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Hathaway. All those in, any questions or comments? Just don't make it Illion Eye, blue and orange, please. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, Dr. Bidding. Communications, I guess Mrs. Valdez isn't here. We'll go to you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, President Summers. Tonight, we have an update to the school board policies, administrative guidelines, and forums, batch three, for your consideration on first reading. As you know, we've laid out a timeline and you've been going through this process. And we've had two batches that have been approved now. And tonight, we're ready for batch three for first reading. Would point out to you that we did add a policy Friday, or I'm sorry, Thursday, prior to publication. But we did not change the narrative. So we actually have for you eleven policies tonight for your consideration, two administrative guidelines, and two forms. During this process, the, the board is only approving policies, but we've been bringing each of those to you so that you could see them and also so the public could see them. Administrative guidelines are identified with the letter R and the forms are identified with the letter E. And anything without that is a letter and followed by a number which would represent a policy. I think at this time, Mr. Slaughter and Mr. Vogt may provide an update on these policies.
Batch three bylaws and policies. Policy B225, board meetings. This policy outlines the procedures for board meetings of Board of School Trustees of Northwest Allen County Schools. It emphasizes compliance with the Indiana statutes of the open-door law, ensuring that meetings are generally open to the public and streamed live on the school corporation's website with the exception of executive sessions. The policy discusses meeting procedures, including the use of Robert's Rule of Order and the role of the superintendent in preparing meeting agendas. It sets guidelines for quorums, voting, and electronic participation, allowing board members to attend meetings electronically under specific conditions, replacing policies 0160, 0161, 0162, 0163, 0164, 0164.1, 0164.2, 0164.3, 0165, 0165.1, 0165.2, 0165.3, 0165.4, 0165.6, 0166, 0167, 0167.1, and 0167.4. Policy C100, entrance and age requirements. This policy outlines the age requirement for kindergarten as well as the assessment process for determining placement in the event that an enrolling first-grade student has not completed kindergarten, replacing policy 5112. Policy C300, programs for students with disabilities and least restrictive environment. This policy outlines the commitment of Northwest Allen County Schools to provide special education service in compliance with state and federal laws, ensuring that students with disabilities are educated in the least restrictive environment suitable for their needs, replacing policies 2460 and 2460.02. Policy C475, school-sponsored publications and productions. This policy pertains to school-sponsored student publications and productions within Northwest Allen County Schools with specific definitions for publication and production. While the board retains ultimate authority, it delegates responsibility for applying the policy criteria to staff and administrators who have broad editorial discretion in evaluating material for inclusion in these publications. It also outlines guidelines for the distribution of acceptable content and provides an appeals process for those who believe the policy has not been properly implemented, replacing policy 5722. Policy C500, school trips and privately-sponsored activities involving school corporation employees and students. This policy addresses school-sponsored trips and privately-sponsored activities involving school corporation employees and students within Northwest Allen County Schools, replacing policies 2340 and 8640. Policy D525, no distracted driving. The policy addresses the concerning rise in distracted driving incidents linked to electronic device and in-vehicle infotainment system usage. The policy prohibits specific actions while operating school vehicles, such as cell phone or tablet use, except when used with hands-free technology or for emergency calls, eating or drinking, and grooming activities. Policy F275, gift and donations. This policy outlines acceptable standards and practices for receiving gifts and donations, including the distribution and use of gift cards. This policy aims to ensure that gift cards are not used to bypass the corporation's accounting system, maintaining sound financial practices in all cases, replacing policy 7230. Policy G325, free and reduced-price meals. This policy ensures compliance with federal and state laws governing school meal programs, particularly counting and audit requirements, replacing policy 8531. Policy G350, audio, video, and digital recording of meetings. The policy on audio, video, and digital recording applies to all individuals on corporation property and outlines the rules and exceptions regarding the right to video-record individuals, replacing policies 2410, 2461, and 7440.01. Policy H250, school library material removal request procedure. This policy outlines the process for addressing objections, objections to materials within school libraries. It's not replacing any policy.
Okay. Thank you very much. This is first reading, so there is no action by the board on this. And now we'll move to closing items. For someone on the closing items will be board comments. Any board comments?
Do you want to go over any comments on these? Mr. Parker, do you have some that you want to?
Oh. I can share some of the discussions that we've had.
That's fine. Yeah, we can back up, we can back up so there's no action for us to take. But if there's additional comments or items anyone wants to add on the first reading, I guess we go back to that statement.
Well, I just want to make sure we're, if we have some differences that might be changed for the next reading, it would be different.
Okay.
I had conversation today with Mr. Vogt and Mrs. Slaughter. And there were some, and correct me if I don't get them all, but there were some questions about B225, the board meetings policy. On page one of that policy, at the end of the second paragraph, under board meetings generally, this last sentence reads currently in the policy before you, "The order of business may be altered and items added at any meeting by a majority vote of the members present." One of the discussions that we had there was to make this more in line with what we did for the passage of bylaws and policies that in order to amend or alter or add items to an agenda, we may also want to kind of follow that same philosophy and make sure that we're doing that with a majority of actually the entire board. So there was discussion about replacing members present with the two words entire board. There was also discussion below the regular board meetings where it currently has an address of Perry Hill Gymnasium with the address here. To actually make that, so that we don't have to go back and remember to change it, that we could actually make that will be held at a location determined by the Board of School Trustees and published on its agenda. And then it would cover us, even for example, if we wanted to move the meeting to a school for a certain recognition or something like that. Some of the other changes that we discussed were actually a result of code. So I'm not sure there was anything else in that one that we went through.
I've got one other one on there that I'd like to discuss.
Okay.
Put, put in thought is the, on the second page where it talks about you may not attend more than 50% of the board's meeting a calendar year by electronic means. That is from the statute, if I remember correctly. My thought is that that's a very high number percentage-wise, that you could attend 50% of the meetings electronically. I personally, I'd like to see us lower that threshold. But I'm not, it's not a hill I'm going to die on if everybody's set at 50. But that to me just seems like a lot of meetings that you could do electronically. But I do understand that there's, if, if we want to put wiggle room in there, if someone were to get sick and had an extended leave of absence needed and, but they could do meetings electronically that maybe we'd want to...
Is there a number you would, what are out there at this point? I mean, if you think about it, public meetings, there's roughly two a month. So that's 24 meetings, if I did my math right, and then a few other meetings. So we're talking, you'd be talking about missing 12 meetings. Are you talking five meetings?
Probably somewhere in there. Five would be a good number. What percentage is that? I don't, I'm not good at math. 20%? Yeah. 25%?
And I think the idea would be is we could always, as a majority of the board, amend it or accept under extreme circumstances.
Right.
So we know situations where somebody may have cancer and may not want to be out or, or may be unavailable but want to participate. Obviously, we're not going to shut the door on something like that. But again, maybe it's better to put it into writing. So at this point, for at least this discussion, let's make that 20% of the board meetings. Okay? Good. Okay. Any other?
One thing I would just point out also in policy F275, it mentions there that the board must first authorize a resolution. So we plan to come to you with a resolution that would accompany this policy. We do not have that for you at this time, but we can have that for you, I believe, at the next, at the next meeting.
And that'll be a blanket resolution. It won't be a resolution that we have to pass every time, it'll just be a one-time.
Right. It'll be a one-time resolution.
Okay. Any other items or topics at this point?
We talked a little bit about, just to give you some background. Something I think is better to discuss, some of the things that we talked about, and that's the, the school trips. We talked about the, the private trips that we work with. So they're quasi-school trips, but the private companies kind of run it and making sure that they are doing background checks on chaperones and volunteers on their end. We don't necessarily need to do it, but we need to make sure that they're doing it. So since we're approving it, we need to make sure that they're aware that they need to do a background check because that's part of our regular process. And that was in C500.
Got it. Thank you.
I think that was... Majority of it. Other minor, minor tweaks.
Anything else, Christine? Is it good?
I think that's it.
Liz, do you have anything else to add? All right. Didn't mean to cut everybody off on that earlier, so my apologies. And now we'll move to closing items. Board comments. Is there any board comments for this evening? We have none. Move over here to superintendent's comments then.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. All right. So our next regular board meeting will be held November 13th at 6:00 PM here at the Perry Hill Gymnasium. And with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Vogt, second by Ms. Slaughter. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. And board members, please log off for docs.